Good evening, Happy New Year. It's seven o'clock, it's 6:30. We have a form, we'll call a finding board meeting to order. First up for general information is Carol Parker. Carolyn Parker.
We have the existing Phillips 66, 110 Russell Street. And the owner is rebranding it to a mobile gas station. So there's a few things that, I guess they started doing it and found out we needed to come here. So they had banned the existing freestanding sign, but they've taken that bag off. So they did go in and change out dispensers and stuff like that, so the mobile dispensers are in. So if we want to just go page by page. Basically, we're just going to maintain the freestanding sign, take the Phillips 66 off and put two new faces on that say "mobile." They would like to take the manual prices down and put up a new sign that has LED pricing. It would be eight inch high digits due to the width of the sign, that's as big as we can get with any LED sign. You know, it dims as it gets darker at night. It can, you know, it can be set to a certain brightness if that's an issue with anybody. Then the next page just shows the gas station, that there's four dispensers. And that stuff I'll talk about in a minute. The next thing we have is we're going to go in and reskin the canopy. So the canopy will be blue. And we'll put two new mobile signs up on the canopy in place of the existing Phillips 66 signs.
Now, these are all externally illuminated?
The LED, unless we're told otherwise.
Well, you only show that the pricing pipe pod is digital.
Right, but this sign, this mobile sign is LED. So just the letters light up, the background is opaque.
It lights up now?
The Phillips 66, I don't know that.
If it does light up now, then it's not permitted to light up in the future.
All right, but if it lights up, I can light it up?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll find that out when I drive home. And then, mobile has this new, new thing that they're, have what they call their new gas, it's called Synergy. And it's seven components to give you better gas mileage. And I have shown, given you a sample of a site, what a site currently looks like. And we're looking to install, this is not this location, but it's another location that we've done the Synergy at. So this is, this would be called a blade. This is called a koala. And then we have number wedges. So instead of the number for the, what pump you're at being on the dispenser, they now have them coming off the columns, which is easier for the people when they're going in the store saying, "I'm at pump B," or whatever.
That's an awful lot of signs. I don't know if they're all there today. What's there today?
None of those signs are there today, that's extra.
Okay. You're permitted one roadside sign.
Yeah.
Up to, what is it, four building signs. And you'd be considered building signs, it would get total sixty-four square feet.
Okay, so there's one sign on the building, and then we'd want two on the canopy.
And those signs on canopies are allowed?
They're currently, they have two signs on the canopy?
They're showing, they have Phillips 66 signs now on here.
But it would be considered a wall sign if that's a structure?
Well, they're all, you've got one roadside.
Right.
And up to four building signs inside, whether it be canopy, building, whatever you want to call it.
Right.
So on, the total is less than sixty-four square feet.
The question, how many square feet of sign do they have now, signage do they have now, and how much are you proposing?
I don't know that, I don't know. The only thing I don't know is what the size of the wall sign is. But the two proposed canopy signs, I believe are thirteen square feet. Then it would be twenty-six. So we'd be under the sixty-four. And that would be three signs. So on the Synergy components, that's the dispensing area, if I don't have text on it, can I put them up?
Say it again, huh?
If there's no text on the blades, can I install them?
What is it going to be, what is it going to be on there?
Nothing. It's just going to be red.
The numbers are going to be on it, right?
Well, the numbers are-
The pump numbers are fine.
The pump numbers are fine, because that's directional.
I mean, you're asked with a lot of stuff. And I don't know if we have a problem with it or not, because simply sitting here and saying, "I want to do this, I want to do this," I'll be honest with you, we want to see what it's going to look like.
That's why I gave you a sign.
Now you're saying you want to do something different.
Well, no, I mean, the only difference I would do is I wouldn't have, this would have, this would just be red. So that word wouldn't be on it, and then it wouldn't be considered a sign.
Okay.
We just want the gas stations to look alike.
So, the red, is that the koala?
Well, this is a koala.
Or is it the blade?
Which, on the koala, they put the safety stuff, like, "Stop your engine, no smoking," and all that stuff, that's what goes on the koala. And it's called the koala because it wraps the-
But it wraps vertically, and then the blade sticks out horizontally?
Right.
I know you want them to look like, but maybe they shouldn't look like, I'm not saying that you're wrong, and the village overlay just, you know? I mean, I wish we paid more attention to Dunkin' Donuts when it was changing from Mr. Donut to Dunkin' Donuts.
Right.
Because if you go to Williamsburg, it certainly doesn't look, the Dunkin' Donuts there certainly doesn't look like the Dunkin' Donuts in Hadley.
Right.
And it's more attractive.
Okay, so this sign is twenty-five square feet. Three, thirty-six.
Right, but I, can I put a box around that? Because that's the only pot that lights up. This is opaque. This is only thirty-six because the fascia is thirty-six. So only the, it's going to be like a halo, so only, see the white pot is going to glow.
Yeah, but what's the dimension of that?
I don't know, I'd have to find that out. I would just make sure that, it would, well, I would just make sure the three signs are under the sixty-four.
We want to make sure of it's under the sixty-four before we give you approval.
Oh, okay.
And that's our job. Okay. So, and then the building sign.
So it wasn't, I didn't know what, this said it was like a planning zoning commission, maybe.
Planning one.
But that's, no, go ahead, sorry.
We have the jurisdiction over part of the site plan approval, the way site plan approves and goes for the, and decides to be things consistent signs?
Can I borrow this?
Sure.
I don't, that one.
All right. Those are fine. You said it was a building sign, too?
There's currently a building sign on the building, when I drove by, it says Food Mat.
Okay.
So I would have to find, I don't know the size of that, I'd have to find that out.
Okay.
So I'm allowed.
What does it mean, by one sign, like digital pods?
It doesn't. It does, what it does say is specialty signs, gas station pricing pods, which should not exceed sixteen square feet. But the only light emitting signs that are allowed are, like, basically an open sign in the window. So the-
So we're at sixteen square feet for that existing price sign? But what we're doing is we're taking the three prices off and putting just one price. So they just will have regular prices.
So light emitting signs.
This setup is fine.
But they're going to change it to LED, right?
That's what she's requesting, yes. And that's not-
Not allowed.
That's not allowed.
So a halo sign is allowed.
Yes, that's what the canopy sign will be.
Okay.
And this will just have to, this will be opaque, and that's the only thing that'll light up at night. So it'll look like it's floating there. I mean, that's the only way we can make that, I mean.
Under the new rules and regulations, canopy, no signs may be permitted on canopies.
Yeah, but she, they let them know, they know. No, so you're saying this is going to be a backlit sign?
Yes.
So this will be-
This is opaque, and just the mobile will do it.
Backlit or illuminated?
It'll be whatever you want it to be.
Backlit, if you can do backlit, that's more preferable.
Like kale, right.
Okay. You think a backlit is, it's actually kind of pretty.
Yeah, no, it is. I will agree with you. So I can't have LED on my price sign?
We-
We can make it-
We don't know that yet.
Okay. Because we can change it to like a-
Certainly can flash.
No, it's not going to, that would be, that would be smart pay come on signs.
Are you going to have one of those televisions that as soon as you put your credit card in, starts advertising something?
I don't, I don't know, I just filled up there, and I didn't see anything come on, so. And those can be shut off, they, sometimes they just come with a dispenser. You know what I mean?
Well, if you know how, there's one of the buttons on the right-hand side, here's the third one down.
You can mute it?
Press the button, get muted noise.
[laughing]
I went over there one day, I said, "There's a bother in me." You know, I'm pushing the button, it's, "Ha, that's it." The screen stayed lit, but I knew the third button on the right side down, pressed it, and the thing muted. I said, "Well, that's cool."
Either that, or you just put everything on the screen.
Yeah.
That's possible, too.
Because we can't know one minute what's going on with the news.
What's the board's preference on the digital pricing for the pod pricing?
I'd rather not go there, because I think we're trying to be consistent.
Okay. So you could go with the, any form of that, any form of those. What else do you think? You can leave the center, you'll leave the-
They'll probably do that in one. Do I have to come back and show you that?
Yes. And just like you said, you should, you know, put it in writing what the other ones are going to be.
Yep. And then I'll find out the square footage of that sign.
Okay.
I can, maybe I can go there and measure it now.
So where are you pulling out that comment that there's no signage on a, on the canopy? No signs may appear on canopies?
Yeah.
Seventeen point six points, six point one, canopies do not appear as in internally lit signs.
I'm not sure if that's the canopy that we're moving up, we're talking, last time I was in the canopy, we were talking about over windows.
Yes, yes.
Again, right, that was-
Because this canopy is probably instead of a building, it's a structure that has four-
Yeah, I see it.
Yeah, I think, this is pre-existing, so.
That was the one when we were trying to deal with those-
And I'll find out if they'll lit when I go by.
Okay, awnings with the labels on them.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, awnings, awnings, I think awnings would be to talk about, but again, to Joe's point, it might mean they cannot be like that, too, but, yeah. And most, just a red sign for the, you call it a blade?
Yep.
Okay.
Just red. So I can bring all that back.
Be here in two weeks.
Two weeks?
Yeah.
No place else I'd rather be.
Every first and third week, well.
Worcester.
Well, it's not too bad.
Nah.
At least it's not snowing or anything.
So it's a start at ten o'clock, I'll be in bed.
Oh, it is?
That's what my father told me. I don't know.
Worcester.
My husband watches the news and the weather, I don't.
Okay.
All right, so I'll be back.
Okay. Mr. Crowley?
Gene Crowley, Hadley Corner Shopping Center. I am here because I have a new tenant for the shopping center to replace the Sweet Frog. It is a Asian Hawaiian restaurant.
Oh, jolly.
More of a fast casual concept, similar to Chipotle. And it is something I think that'll be well received. So I need the use approved by you folks, please. And I also have a sign drawing for you to-
Isn't this the second Asian restaurant that's come through as a change of, no, wasn't there another one there?
No, it was a pizza.
It's not there.
There was a quick oven-
I thought there was a Chinese restaurant that came through, and you could go in and pick what you wanted on your dish.
Well, not in this property, I don't know if somewhere else in town is possible, I don't know.
Okay.
Sure, sorry. It's non-illuminated from the inside, it's externally illuminated only, it's less than forty square feet, and it's consistent with all the other signs in the center. It's a total of thirty-nine square feet, it is an ordinary sign company, didn't add it, do the math, but I just did it, thirty-nine square feet.
So I'll make a motion to approve change of use and to approve sign design.
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We don't have to give, do you want to these things, do we?
Uh, it wouldn't hurt to-
Is that for me?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a new system, we're trying to, I got the signature copy here.
Okay.
Just means we're not the be-all, end-all, you should check with other- You know this, but just to be consistent, you're going to take one and you're going to sign one to acknowledge you've received one.
Okay.
So since we're technically-
I can do that right now.
We're technically waiving site plan approval by not making you go through site plan approval. So this just tells you that waiver of site plan approval does not mean that you're free to go. You still have to talk to the building inspector, board of health, fire department.
This is a form I will fill out and give to the building inspector, and simply says, because in the past, I've been, "We do this," and he doesn't hear about it, like, you know, "What did you do, how do you know I know that?" So you don't have to worry about this, just sign, hey, we signed, give to the building inspector that we just did what we did, and it's been working pretty well.
Okay. In the past, you've had me mail you something also, do you-
Yeah, you want to email me that?
Okay. And when I did that, I would just send it to Tim at the same time.
Yeah, that's fine.
But that's what this is, it's kind of, take care of that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
We have a transmittal, so. Mr. Roberts?
Well, I'm here on 220 Russell Street, Suite 200, and I don't think Mr. Dunn was here when we talked about this project before, but I think everybody else was, so I'm talking about this building right here, which is, my Cross, New Waddick CrossFit is out in the front here. And there's a series of buildings, this is the wagging tails that you approved a little while ago. So this building here, I had a tenant in there, which was Berkshire Children's and Family, it had seventy-five hundred square feet. They moved to West Springfield to better serve their clientele in Springfield and Hoyo. So now I have seventy-five hundred square feet to fill up there. And I have a company called Aclary that came out of UMass, it's a brand new company. And the last two pages of this is, this is just background on the company. But the last two pages is really what we need to talk about. They need, they would like to take thirteen hundred fifty-five square feet. So if you open the very last page, that is what it was with Berkshire Children's and Families. And when they downsized at one time, we split it up into various little tenancies. But Aclary wants to take on the eight and a half by eleven, you can see what they would like to take, which is only thirteen hundred fifty-five square feet over on the left. And the rest, I'll work to run to other, I'm actually working with another spinoff of UMass that wants the rest of the space. So it's, they want to do office, where it says Tenant One, four hundred and eighty square feet, that'll be their office. This corridor, I would put a door at the north end, so that it would all be contiguous. They want to do some testing in where it says 1B. They want to do some proof of concept assembly in 1C.
So what are you looking for, first to like, very?
I think just thought I should, because we're in Aquifer, and it's a different use than what we've been doing. He just thought I should come talk with you.
We're kind of like a research use, like a pilot plant, small pilot plant use, in a way.
Yeah, but they're assemble, you can see the thing right here that they built. So they want to assemble a few of these till they prove it, and then they'll go offsite and start building, you know? They even talked to me about if they can get the funding, build a separate building, you know? We have room still here to build over here.
The only other problem with that is this building, though, would be considered industrially used, pilot plant use is okay.
Different, yeah. If you have manufacturing would be-
If you have manufacturing, that's what the industrial-
Yeah, okay.
I'll see if I can-
And I told them, they still have an association with UMass, they were, and if they're going to do any testing on hazardous materials, I told them they could not do it here, down by the sewer treatment plant, Amis Sewer Treatment Plant, they can do hazardous testing there with UMass. So I told, that's part of their lease, if they can't do anything. Believe it or not, the other company that we're talking to also treats water.
It has to be a big thing, with all the need and all the various-
They have, the other company has a pilot program set up at South Hadley Sewer to treat the affluent that comes out.
Whoops. Nuts on the ground.
I'm going to picture where this, is this like across from where the Dusty Rose-
This is that, basically at the end of the senior housing out there, behind the fitness center.
Across from Sam's?
Sam's, yeah.
And then you got the Stards?
Right, right.
Right there.
Yeah, and then next to that was that, that ice cream shop, the Dusty Rose or whatever came having-
Yeah, but it's across the street.
Across, right.
On the north side of Russell Street.
Right. Boy, they've got ambitious people on staff.
I see it.
Unbelievable.
What's the address in this area?
220 Russell Street, Suite 200.
Dean Capital Wharton, Lily Tech.
The company's been around a while, right, Lily Tech?
Probably, yeah. So I'll make a motion to- What was the previous?
Same thing.
It's a social services agency.
Social services. In the same building, we have Share Coffee. So this building's divided into, mark, this building's divided into currently, so the seventy-five hundred square foot post is about here. Share Coffee is in here. And the northwest district attorney, Drug Enforcement, is in the back.
Should we take it up before that?
Are you starting at seven or seven-tenth?
Seven fifteen. Okay. We have mixed views.
So you think we got this motion down again?
So I'll make a motion to approve a change of use for Aclary for office space and assembly slash proof of concept. Open perenn, not manufacturing, no hazardous material testing in Aquifer, no exterior alterations.
That's the motion. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion is granted.
Thank you.
Okay, just a minute. Yeah. Just to make sure we're consistent, this just says that particularly doing your approval doesn't mean it's quite blind to go and do bypass, help board of health and building inspector and all the rest of this stuff, which some people have actually thought that meant, or say, you thought it meant. You know better.
Probably send you something, or is that sufficient?
If you have this in PDF, yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck. Second one.
How are you, good evening?
Good evening.
This is for 103 Russell Street. Except for 44 Lawrence Plain Road. Wanted to propose, as you can see, this is 103 Russell, Fremo Pizza. And the flower boxes and the old, we're working the front, pretty much seen its day. And I wanted to propose the before and after, I just wanted to go with a clean look. We're just going to throw up like a little, a pick of fence there, some new billiards. There are some billiards that are in these posts existing, these posts right here, when I was doing some work, and I, I don't know if they're going to meet an ADA egress when I expose them, so we might have to put new ones in, I might be able to use them, they might be rotted out. We proposed new ones, just so you guys would see what it's going to look like. And then we're just going to clean up the overhang, you know, clear it up, we painted the whole exterior, put a new roof, new parking lot on it, and just going to clean up the front of it.
Who owns the building?
My wife and I do.
The Fremo pizzas?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Do you own the business or the building?
To the business.
Okay.
Fremo staying, I hope?
Fremo staying, yeah. Yeah, Richard, Richard gave it to Michelle a couple years ago.
They do a bang.
Oh, you're, you're Michelle's husband?
Yes.
Oh, I got it.
Yeah, I remember you, while you're driving.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
He's a landscaper, right?
Right.
Yeah. We live here, we moved here last year, full-time.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so we live in here full-time, though.
What are you calling this?
It's all non-structural, it's all non-bearing.
Okay.
Richard calls you, he can't say his name, because he says, "Set."
Set, yeah, he's called me "set," yeah.
I'm just going to call Fremo Pizza Reef Assad.
That's fine, yeah. And we're going to clean up the underhang, there's some lights underneath there, they're all bashed out and stuff.
This is, signs. 103 Russell?
That's all the store owners. Here's a couple signs up there, you know, but we're not dealing with anything on the roof.
So I'll make a motion to waive site plan approval for exterior alterations to the facade for the drawings. And- So these posts are not structural?
No, nothing, nothing's bearing, everything can leave over inside, yeah. And this is from a structural engineer that I do with, that's where we came from.
Second.
Who's second?
You.
We got a motion, a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Motion passes unanimously. Like the others, if you could just sign the bottom of that.
I probably won't do it till spring now with the weather, so.
Give him a copy.
Day seventh?
Yeah.
Give him the copy, please. I'm going to see that.
Thank you very much.
You want to take John's, or?
Yeah. You can take the topic of the, remains for sign request that we just found out about. And this is for AJ Signs for Orange, what do they want to, by your side, what does that mean?
I'm not sure what they got in mind, but it must exceed what zoning bylaws permit because they come before us.
Because it's a multi-tenant building, so they're only allowed forty square feet.
Now, did they come before you for site plan approval originally?
No.
Or was part of the-
When Manny's was there, Manny's came for site plan approval. But they have not come back to us for any changes or anything like that, since they're doing what they're doing.
So they'll come back to you for change of use?
Well, the law came back to us after Manny's moved out and got permission to divide the structure to three retail spaces. So we don't need to do site plan approval again, that part is fine. But I think we have sort of a standard condition, we want to see the signs and everything from the new tenants as they come in. And that place is oversigned anyway, so we'd be holding, we'd expect to hold the line at forty square feet. It, what, as Manny's, it supported a sixty-square-foot sign because it was a single-tenant building. But now that it's a multi-tenant building, it supports three forty-square-foot signs, one for each tenant, one for each tenant space. And- And.
Far as I know, they're the only ones in there now, right?
Yeah, but they're dividing it more than one tenant.
There's nobody else coming in there presently.
Right.
And I think that it's just in the aquifer, I think, just, we could double check that. But I think we did wanna come, we wanted people to come in and see us, so as they identify tenants, just to know who, who was gonna be there. But we don't, we do that informally, administratively. So it doesn't require another public hearing, but. But yeah, they got forty square feet to sign, that's all they get.
Yeah, we're not, yeah, we're not in favor, I mean, we can even make a motion that we're not, maybe should do that.
What is it, Orange Theory, do we know what they do?
It's a fitness place.
Fitness, yeah.
Another one?
No.
Oh, well, it's small, it must be out of shape.
It's kind of, it's kind of a boutique one, it's very small, it's not as big as Planet Fitness, so it's like a more of a specialty kind of place.
It's similar to F forty-five, like session trainings, an hour, so it's not a twenty-four seven type of gym. It's a class, it runs every hour.
Like almost like personal trainer kind of thing?
Yeah, in a, in a group session, kind of, so that's how, it's very similar to F forty-five.
This is a different.
We can stay in if you want.
Yeah, we're gonna. We're taking a vote that we're, go ahead, Mr. Blair.
I'll make a motion to oppose the issuance of a variance for any signage exceeding forty square feet.
Second.
That's for Orange Theory in seven South Maple. Motion a second, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, give it out, two cents. Thank you. I am.
Yeah.
Coogan?
Ian Coogan, yep.
Oh, Coogan, okay. We're gonna be invaded by the air.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just got down at the base and just get done, so I am, sorry, I only have four of these. I'm the franchisor for Sport Clips Haircuts, I'm not sure if you guys ever heard of Sport Clips? It's a, it's a hair kind chain that targets men and boys. It's a sports environment, so you leave your haircut, you feel like you got your own kind of place. We, you know, we, we're not a unisex, we mostly are for men and boys. And so we do haircuts and we do this thing called MVP to the hot towel after the haircut with massage, in a massage chair, so.
Where is this?
It's gonna be on, it's in three fifty, it's in the WS Development, right by, pretty close to L O B.
It's between five guys and.
Really? I thought there was a group with other tenant in there.
There's what?
I thought that there was only gonna be three tenants, five guys, one oh one.
No.
Yeah, there's two, there's us and then somebody else, I'm not sure who else they've, the place is open. Right now, I mean, so.
Yeah, they were, they were, they were mentioned from the beginning.
We were, yeah, we were from the beginning, we've been trying to open up like for the last four years.
I'm not sure if you're gonna have them there.
Eight chairs.
Eight?
Yeah.
What's the one price of a haircut? You're running a little bit of TV, so it's a little bit of going down.
Nineteen dollars for a haircut. Senior, senior varsity is sixteen dollars, so.
Did pretty cool, I'm into.
There's, there's eighteen hundred of them across the country, we're in every state, and it's the leading men's hair, men's and boys' hair cutting place. So we came today for the sign, sign's gonna be halo lit, forty square feet. The top part is gonna be halo lit, the white haircuts part will be unwet at night. So the only part that'll be lit during the evening is the, the next page shows the part that's.
Kind of a heavily regulated location in Massachusetts, isn't it, don't you have to go through a lot of training?
Yeah, I, I won't be in the store, I just, I do the business part of it. So I, we have a manager that runs, that has a license that runs the, that runs the day-to-day, they'll be there every day, or not every day, but you know, he'll be there, running the operation. Then I get my, I just get a license through the state, you know, the cosmetology license to the state, and the manager's on the license, and they're the, they're the ones that will run the daily hair cutting.
And this will be, sign will be on hours of operation, when will it be off?
I, I think ten o'clock was they said was, was the way it could be, I thought, I believe, I can't remember the. Well, I mean, I'll see whatever time the landlord said and then make sure. Yeah, I think it was ten o'clock. It'll be, it'll be on mostly on times of darkness, won't be, we really won't need it during the day, so yeah, times of darkness, basically, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the signage per tear sheet, not to be illuminated after ten P M.
Second.
Motion a second, any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Just to let you know, parking is a little tight right up in front of it. This is part of a bigger complex of the mall. So you may have to ask your employees to park just a little bit away from.
Yeah, I was surprised how tight the parking was when they, when they.
Yeah. I've had several comments by people and they said.
You could just sign it. Okay. Yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to do something about that, because they said that if they try, if they try to park right in front of our store, it would just be, it would be detrimental to us, because it looks like we're a lot more crowded than we really are and people decide not to come, so, yeah.
What'd you decide?
Okay. We've already started working the building permit for our build out, so.
That's basically what that does, it just tells you to talk to the, talk to the building department and everyone else, because we're not the last word.
Okay, sounds good, thank you, appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thanks. Guys, can I come get a haircut first time?
Yeah, let's see, fifty dollar gift, so.
Kappen?
Yeah. Sorry, I didn't know that we had to go through the permit, but the sign person said they're better to show you guys. We did get the permit for headly dental care a while back when we were planning to open, so the sign which is outside on the road is, we went through that and we have the sign already. But we have, in the building, Mill Valley Commons facing towards the road, our space has eleven windows altogether. And six of them fall in the patient operator's side, so we were trying to cover that. So I got somebody to give us an estimate for perforated, like a graphic kind of thing. So this is what we initially proposed, now, I'm not sure if this falls under the signage, but these are perforated vinyls that give a one-way view. So person from the outside on daytime cannot see inside to protect protection privacy.
I think they set this around everybody.
Yes. So I am not too much concerned if we have to make the headly dental care part smaller or just put on one window. We have a sign outside, and these images are taken by me because I do photography, so I was trying to, if I was paying for the vinyl, I asked him, can we put some graphics? It's like it's the same price whether you put graphics or not. But then he was like, well, might as well go through the permit part of it.
You're gonna put a, you wanna put a dental drill in the window?
In a, in a little artistic way.
I'll tell you what, I'd turn it.
We could make it more beautifying than that.
Ever see Marathon Man?
No.
Check it out.
I will.
Check it out.
Sorry.
I always wondered about that when I went and buy it shortly, like maybe a week or two ago, looked in the window and I says, it's nice to sit in your chair and look out the window. But to have the people driving down Route nine and looking at you.
Yeah.
It's like, that's kind of strange.
I wanted to put blinds, but all the patients that came in, they're like, please don't cover it with blinds, we like the view. So like, you like it from inside out, but not the other way around.
Yeah.
So the sign person from Springfield has like, can we do something one-sided, like a tent or something? It's like, we could do something like this, so people from outside cannot see, but your patients can see outside.
So I did talk with the sign person, and let me see, here's my copy of the bylaw.
Gene Nixon?
Yes, sign around.
And it does appear that this does fall into the definition of the sign, which is fairly broad. But it's. It's, well, the question is whether in the nature of an advertisement, announcement, or direction, or is designed to attract the eye? And, yeah, I did an email with, in fact, it's part of the email that changed, that came back to you. On the other hand, we did approve that landscaping mural.
This is a little different, if you refer to seven point six, point seven, point one, signs behind a window facing, not to exceed six square feet, provided it's not illuminated past ten o'clock. Where no more than two such signs will be allowed.
But those are light emitting signs.
But it's in the wind.
Yeah, but those are just, those are specifically for light emitting signs, I think we had.
No, this is on the specialty signs. Canopies, gas station, light, and light emitting signs.
Yeah, seven point six, point seven is light emitting signs, but there was something else about. Well, you're into a size question, about no sign more than forty square feet, so if this is a sign. Would appear to trigger surface area as well.
But will this be in, replacing the window or behind the window?
Behind the window, it's just like a decal.
So.
It's a, it's a.
Kind of like, you can put anything you want, you want in your window.
I mean, that's, initially the sign person said that, well, this doesn't apply, but I was like, well, if I'm spending some money, I wanna make sure that it's legally right. I don't wanna like put something and then have to take it out, so.
Well, no, they, we do have some limits on what, what can go in. The, I'm just trying to. The idea is we don't want the clutter, we don't, and there were, this doesn't have a safety issue, but you think of something like Four Seasons, where they have their windows completely obscured with advertising and backed up with shelving. So you can't drive by and see what's going on in there, which you might wanna do. So I guess the, the question is, if, to the extent that you are putting your, your logo there, that's what makes it a sign, really?
If I'm, we have logos on two of the windows that he proposed, and I actually was opposed to putting the logo at all. But he was like, you know, if, if somebody's looking at it, you might wanna put one logo in there. Like, let, let just a picture be kind of an art over there, I don't, we already have a sign outside. So if I have to just put one logo as compared to two on the windows, then I'm, I'm really okay with that.
Do you have any other building signs?
Uh, the one on the outside, the common sign that's out there.
That's the only sign you have.
That's the only sign.
The one by the road?
Yes.
Push the boards.
I think minus, minus the graphics, it's really an architectural window treatment, it's, it's not a sign. But I could see it's becoming a slippery slope, you start putting, you know, obscene artwork in your.
Next, when the first adult entertainment club opens up, then probably they're gonna have problems.
Well, Mark, this is about the time I give my usual speech, part of it Phil Dwyer used to give it, Halme's, Woko's, theirs, Kmart, all have very, the biggest signs in town, Snivers, they're no longer in business. His good work is gonna be the important advertising. Signs are not that critical.
So, but on the other hand, some direction, directional signage, now that everybody knows he's great, how are they gonna find out where he is? I, I guess, you know, if it's, how, how many? How many window logos you're, how many?
So there are total six window, I don't know if you have the second page on that.
It's, it's nice, but you might wanna see something like this walking down, you know, Third Avenue, Third Avenue and Forty-first Street in New York.
We could make this New York.
It's very urban, it's very urban.
Well, the theme of the office is urban, and I would like to invite you actually just to take a tour of the office, it's, it's not something that you're gonna see. And sometimes we wanna think outside the box a little bit, so I, I still wanna think about, you know, what legal it is allowed. If it's not allowed, it's not allowed, I'll figure something else to do, but.
You're, you're, as far as legal goes, you're creating a regular.
I know, and that's why I thought to come to the meeting rather than just putting it out there.
We're, we're trying to, you know, work with you and not be too much of a.
So, sorry, this is.
What would be the reason to sign though?
Signs, but it is, but it is a sign, so there's.
Two signs.
Basically five and a half. I mean, as far as the sign though, this is ballpark. This is seventy-two, not quite seventy-two square feet and not quite seventy-two square feet.
Okay. And that is the image.
That is the image.
So how big is the actual, what's the box that would go around the logo, do you think?
If that's sixty-six, probably, that's a whole window, so that's forty inches ballpark in here by forty-eight, one twenty, forty by. How many would be here, it was twenty-four, so four by, four by two, eight square feet, eight square feet.
And I know we have two over there, but I'm more than okay to just keep one.
So those six windows are where your chairs are?
Yes, we have eleven altogether, so the staff side and the other lab side, which are the other windows, I mean, this is expensive, I can't afford to put all eleven windows. So just the operator's side is what I'm trying to, the other will just be like office blinds, white color office blinds, so keeping it simple.
I think it's attractive.
I, I'm not disagreeing, it's not ugly.
No, no, and, you know, I'd rather see this in a mobile sign, I'd rather see this in a mobile sign, okay? There is, there is some sensibility to this, and there's some people gonna be curious about it.
These, these pictures, honestly, I, I took it just for me to like send it real quick to him, but if I'm like doing this, I'm, I wanna spend some time, the editing, colors and everything is. I like black and white, to be honest, I don't even like too much colors, so everything in the office, a picture.
This is your creation, it might be covered by the First Amendment.
As long as he doesn't put any logo on, he could put, yeah, no, it, I, the sign people come up with ideas faster than the bylaw can change. So.
When he put the sign, that's what I asked him the question, is that, hey, I see a sign, and I'm pretty sure we have to go through the signing permission for it, so I think that's the time I'm gonna email it to you.
Yeah, and, and I, I agree, it could constitute a sign.
Yeah.
If it were all a, all a logo.
Yeah.
That would definitely be a sign. But I think with, what, what did you say, forty by twenty inches?
Forty by roughly twenty-four, I'm talking like eight, eight square feet.
Yeah.
It's not ugly, you're right, but it's kind of attractive.
Was the address?
No.
One Mill Valley Road, unit D as in dog.
I'm not opposed to it, but I just wonder. Then we get to the gray line, well, that was voluptuous art, well, we think that's inappropriate with kids, you know.
Right, well, he's got a point, it's, there's some sensuality to this, it's not neutral.
I could swap the picture if that was.
I know, but that's part of what makes it attractive, the sensuality.
Good question, do we have any say over that, and I don't, I don't know that we do, but it might be something for future bylaws.
Where do you go to dental school?
NY. I mean, the office, we focus on cosmetic dentistry, so what you're looking is. I mean, the office, we focus on cosmetic dentistry, so what you're looking is not that aspect, you're showcasing the cosmetic part of doing things.
So I might just.
So Lingon was not gonna give the dental students free.
Same, sorry.
Lingon is giving the medical students at NYU free tuition, but not the dental school.
I think I heard a pretty big catch on that. It was just what it made the news. There was, there was a lot of caveats to it, which, which I don't think that actually anyone.
Was foolish and horrible.
Yeah, and there was like something you had to do, and there, there were caveats to it. I'm pretty sure it was not just a freebie, like how the media portrayed it to be. But no, unfortunately, nothing for the dental students, so.
Okay, so I, I'll make a motion to approve window decals with a logo not to exceed forty inches by twenty inches each on the first and sixth panels only. So basically, what you've shown us.
Second. Motion, second.
Do we want to say which panels or just say on two panels? Because then we've locked him in on where he can, and that, that'll affect his.
He's presented it as the first and sixth, so I'm trying to tie it back into what, what you gave us.
Okay.
You can always come back if you want to.
Do the third and fourth or something, right?
Yeah.
But probably the first and sixth makes sense.
Yeah, I'd probably keep it just the way it is. Quick question, anything in terms of changing the color of the picture? Do I need to go through the process?
If that's substantially what you're going to.
Not really. The only thing is, when he actually, when I send him, he's going to take a printout and make a markup on the window to see that, okay, is everyone looking as good as what we think on the computer is?
When you have actual, maybe when you have actual callers come back.
Sure.
Just the same way you did here.
Yeah.
The, the external appearance of the building is part of the site plan approval function, so.
I understand that.
So, and is this okay with the landlord?
I can certainly check with.
You better.
I mean, initially I asked him about it, like as long as you go through the town approval, that's what matters, it's like, and it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
I honestly want to see black and white images only. I like black and white, so if that's the case, and if they print out the black and white and try it, are you guys okay, or do I still should come in? The color part, I agree that you want to make sure that it's not too much.
Why don't you come back with the final image?
Okay.
I'll add that to the motion to return with the final images.
I mean, these images are final. The only thing that would change is the brightness or the contrast if it prints out, and that's not good, but I'm not changing the entire image.
Okay.
Or the only thing that would change is just going it to black and white instead of colors, because it's just, the color part is just not looking good as.
But still, we'd like to.
Yeah.
We'd like to sign off on what you're actually going to do.
So when he does the markup, I should take a picture and then bring it here? Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah, and the same thing, just come in at the, you know, the first.
Yeah.
So we know what should do tonight?
So I think you could prove it to the concept to approve window decals, logo not to exceed forty by twenty inches on first and sixth panels only, to return with final images.
I would second that.
Is this your initial practice, or were you practicing elsewhere?
I was practicing elsewhere, and I'm worse, yes, but for me, this is my first practice.
Uh, yes.
Okay, we got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
So I don't think we need to give him the, the, that thing.
You don't think.
I wonder, no.
You don't think Tim would care?
Yeah, well, it's always a business, he's here in business, he's, he's only looking for, um, you know, but just maintain the system like you said.
Yeah.
Wasn't there some discussion that first responders might want to be able to see inside?
That what?
That first, first responders might want to be able to see inside.
So I don't know that that's a big deal. I mean, there's a lot of places in dental places they can't see inside, you know. Lot of buildings, they make a, you know, staples and wood, all kinds of windows, but none of their, just fake windows. They just show you as an image in their own blank solid wall.
So my building was built for dental professionals, and it has, the windows start at five feet. They go five to seven or something. So there is, you, you can see out, but you can only see the sky and the trees.
Would, would it be HIPAA violation if people can look in and see who your patients are?
No, I checked with the state board. It's like this one, it's a gray area. It's, there's no law that disallows people from looking inside. There is, I mean, if you think about it, original way that dental offices were, there were closed rooms, right? Operatories with doors, and then it came with a whole another set of problems. And now, none of the offices have closed operatives, like days, so you have some kind of separation, but you still can, everyone can walk through, everyone can pass by. The next door patient is listening to some extent, so that in itself. So, yeah, in an ideal world, I want a closed operator to preserve privacy, but then again, it comes with its own set of problems, and a lot of doctors have faced those problems, and none of the new offices have, have been quoted according to closed operatives, so what do you do in that case? So just have to find a balance.
So that's something we find out in practice of law. The fact of representation is not privileged. The fact that you are my client, I don't have to, I don't have to let you in one door and send you out another door so that no one else can see. So, yeah, there, there are sort of natural limitations about circulating in public that.
Like our, the CT scan unit that we put in the office, we have to go through the state radiation levels, verification, all that. They came in with the inspection and we ask them, because we have a specific design such that it's not cornered by like four walls. It's open, but it's diverted. I ask them, do I need to put a wall in there? While the contractor is like, oh, you're fine. You can just leave it open, which was completely different, maybe like five years before. You had to put that in a closed room. It had a certain specification, so we go by the flow. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, a couple pieces. We got an invoice on the Daily Hampshire Gazette, but a legal notice that is appearing in the Gazette for the Hadley Auto Service, last week and this week, and the total is one hundred eighty-three dollars and forty cents.
Did they publish it as expected?
Yes. Well, they published the first one, the next one will both be published tomorrow, or third, tomorrow or third, I forget what it is.
Motion to pay.
Second, motion approved, and all, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Motion passes. I don't know, I think everybody, do you notify everybody about this meeting Bill that I went to today?
Uh, no.
No, okay, anyway, there was a meeting today in the Hadley Meeting House that Bill and I were invited to. Bill couldn't make it, and I went, and it was from nine to five. It had to last until nine to about three thirty.
Is that the one that Chris Okafor invited us to?
Yeah, it's called the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant Program. And what it's about is the state is gathering information across multiple towns about municipal, municipal. Municipal vulnerability has really got to do with environmental stuff. In other words, if there's a flood and Hadley is prone to flooding, you know, what things are, is, what things is Hadley prone to from a natural point of view or an environmental point of view? You know, flooding, strong snowstorms, uh, strong storms, wind.
We're talking about the weather now.
We're talking, we're, yes, weather is one. The other one is, it's, it's, yeah, environmental stuff.
Yeah.
And when these things occur, what might the town be lacking? You know, is communication good? Is equipment good? Is drainage good? Is, uh, things along the river going to flooding? Are they, we had to break bylaws. Do we have this? Do we have that? And there was a, a meeting a few months ago with a few people, and they came up with a few top topics. Flooding, storms, uh, strong storms and stuff like that. So we took those and then we expanded on them, a bunch of different topics. We had two teams of like basic people each, you know. Select Board was there, Dave Nixon was there, police, fire, DPW, and various town boards. I was there for the planning board. Bill couldn't make it, like I said. And then you went through kind of a information system, then a checklist, and then, okay, list, list the items that are a concern to you. List what might be able to be done for them. This is all in anticipation of this consulting, which is going to take all this information of the, we narrowed it down to three top topics. We're gonna look this one through, and they're gonna prepare a report. And this report can be submitted to the state for further funding. There was some, some, some big topics. There was bike maintenance, culvert cleaning, flooding in the floodways around the Connecticut River. Flooding in areas that aren't on the Connecticut River, like, you know, some places in the Bill River, some places on Fort River. Sediment control, um, trailers along the river. There's a bunch of trailers. If something happened and it was a, you know, a bad storm came up, we don't even know who most of these people are. And they could, not only that, but are they properly disposing of the wastes? And a bunch of other stuff. So these were a whole bunch of topics that came up. We narrowed them down to three. And the three top topics, and then the report's going to be completed, and, um, request for some kind of funding to assist the town with this, and it could be anything from, uh, equipment to getting grants to help clean the drainage swales, the culverts, replace the culverts, the maintenance of the dike, and a whole bunch of other stuff. Bike maintenance, culverts and ditch cleaning, and trails along the river. Enforcing, finding, getting a group together on the.
Like a posse?
On the. Trail, we have pretty good bylaws addressing use of the trails along the river. But one of the problems is that with all construction going on, the building inspector doesn't even have time to do his regular inspections, a lot of them, and let alone do these zoning enforcing things. And some of the, he's complaining that some of the issues on enforcing the stuff on the trails on a, on a river is a bit confusing. I mean, you know, we're not gonna go there. Whether it is or isn't is irrelevant, but may be able to get, they're gonna look for, you know, get a group together. Does things need to be updated? Make them more clear, a checklist or whatever it might be. And this will be driven, for the most part, by the Board of Selectmen to the DPW, especially for the dike maintenance and for the culvert thing, because we're already doing some of that, but cleaning the culverts and replacing culverts and cleaning a lot of ditches is, I think they got a hundred grand in the budget. That's not gonna go very far. You're talking lots and lots of money to clean that stuff.
There was a book written twenty years ago or so called The Tipping Point. And it just talked about systems in general, or, you know, selling clothes. All of a sudden, everybody wants it. And so when you reach the tipping point, it's basically all over. And what's happened, in my, in my view, is that the drainage system, especially the ditches, have reached, reached the tipping point. So you can't blame the problem on climate change or extreme weather. It just can't handle a rainstorm anymore. And that's my editorial.
Well, there's, there's a couple things that I talked about this on the swale, and that it's not like we're getting more water. There's so much water in the world. There's no new water being created. It's just, there's so much water, it just, it's coming in different intervals. The swales and the cul- the culverts in particular are old. They're designed for a storm of probably, pick a number, sixty or seventy years ago.
And if they were maintained, they would, could handle a storm of today, but they weren't maintained.
That's the other thing. So if we're gonna replace the culverts, there's a, there's a due design criteria to replacing culverts. I'm gonna go into that, but the big thing is cleaning and replacing where necessary, and maintenance, continual maintenance, so.
About the biggest culprit is.
Beavers. Oh, beavers, yeah.
I mean, they, they're causing, well, I mean, two people here.
The water bridge on my property, it's about the fifth time.
Yeah, and it used to be a beautiful stream. Now it's blocked up.
And they were gonna set it in that book too.
Do we still have Watercrest down there somewhere?
It was up by, it's below Wash Garretts's house down there. I don't think it's there anymore, no.
But, yeah, I mean, there's, there's a whole bunch of little issues that are gonna contribute to this. This way, it's all about getting, hopefully to get some grant money. And they gave examples of different towns or cities that have been given grant money over the last couple of years that have been, that have been doing this process. And they've gotten anywhere from basically a, I want to say, you know, fifty, sixty thousand upwards of, in some cases, um, you know, seven figures. So there's a, there's a decent amount of money that's been given out for it.
I mean, the DPW is in charge of digging the ditches, but I've heard there are two people says, I'm not gonna give you permission to go on my land. In New York State, if all of a sudden there's one person in between, a ditch is no good unless it's thoroughly cleaned out from beginning to end. But if a person doesn't give you permission, they can't go there. So I, how's that? I wonder how that's being handled.
That, that's a good question, but on the flip side of that, if you've got that same point, if you've got the land, the ditch cleared upstream and downstream, you're going to get better flow out of that drink. That's a fact.
Yeah.
Okay, so would it be better if they all gave permission? Absolutely, but if you've got, you know, here to here is clean, then here to here is clean, and it was all filled in before, your flow is going to be.
Well, I, I totally agree, but like Pogo says, sometimes the enemy is us. We've catered to the beavers. They're damming everything up, the spay-toed frog and the spotted turtle. Now, if you want to dig a ditch, you have to go, obviously, even before the council, after the conservation commission. You've got to apply for three hundred dollars for a permit to make sure that it's not the potential habitat for the spay-toed frog, so the enemy is us in a way.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And one of the things that came out of the meeting was a lot of people didn't know that about, I says, you know, there's farmers that don't want to apply for APR anymore because of the sale limit by the state.
Correct.
And they says, what are you talking about? And I explained it to them, and they said, how long has that limit been there? And I says, I couldn't tell you, but it's been quite a few years. And I said, something needs to be, that should be tied somehow up. I should, I, I don't disagree with anything they're saying. I'm just telling you what some farmers have been saying, that they're not going to apply for APR because of the limit on selling farmer to farmer. I said, done, it's done to keep the farms affordable, but on the flip side, um, you know, it's hurting them in another hand, so. Anyway, that's what the meeting was about. It was actually a pretty good meeting.
And if we cleared all of our ditches, what would that do to the communities down the Connecticut River from us? I mean, we're actually doing them a favor by flooding Hadley and not dumping it all into the.
Well, part, part of the deal is the water going into the, you want increased flow into the river, but part of that is that the water going into the ditch in many cases should be pretty much sediment removed before it gets into the ditch. I mean, it's not always the case when it runs through farmland, it's farmland drainage.
Well, your argument is that maybe we should not even repair the dikes, but let the river, the river overflow like it used to, and.
Lake Hadley.
Another topic is I got a list, yeah, a full list, from the new HR director requesting from, this goes to all the town department heads on what training have you done, and when does it expire? And for the most part, there was a whole, must have been a dozen items on here. The only ones that really pertain to us was conflict of interest and, and we received an employee handbook, I believe. And I don't, I didn't know the dates. I think the employee conflict of interest was last year.
So I just did it again.
I, I did it again too, because Jessica had sent out a notice, and she told me I was thirteen months earlier, eighteen months earlier.
Okay. Okay.
Part of that, Jessica has been keeping track of that.
Okay.
So we're supposed to, when we complete the test, send her a copy of the certificate.
Right.
So she should have some of that.
Okay, because I will interrupt anybody. I have no idea when I've done.
Well, you know, we're smiling, we don't have a staff. We'll try to remember as best we can.
Well, we can, yeah, we can, but the thing is, the town clerk keeps some of those records. So maybe that's something that.
The two that we have, we might should probably have both of these, because the handbook came for her when conflict of interest is returned to them.
Yep.
So, okay. We, we haven't done any anti-harassment. We can beat each other up all we want, yeah, that's different.
We don't work for each other.
That's right.
So we have, we have no employees to harass.
Except ourselves.
Um, I have nothing else. So I just have a quick thing. I think I sent it around to you on MS four. First of all, I sent around some information that DEP, EPA, and other interested parties have finally settled their issues, and new regulations are being promulgated. I had copied that to Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and to all of you. I got back from planning commission, and I just don't remember if I forwarded it to everyone.
Not yet, not yet.
That some of the changes in the final rules will affect, the regulations we'll be adopting. But we have been given another year to comply.
So we'll be ahead of curve.
Yeah, we hit the bylaw plate, we just need to adopt the regulations.
And so we, we won't have regulations ready for our next meeting. They are going to have to be redrafted somewhat, but not major, but just, there will be some changes.
I took a look at the DEP. I opened it up. I was going to have print, a hundred and sixty pages, I said, I don't think so. Not even going to read through that much stuff.
I did get to page nine. I asked Bill, I said, how do they come up with these percentages? They just decided, fully mill, we changed the percentages. Some pressure someplace. What changed? What's changed?
I have nothing else. Anybody else have anything?
Nope. We have a.
Public hearing at the meeting on the Hadley Auto Service. All right, uh, we, what's called reconditioning of the Hadley Auto Service.
There's also, isn't there, all, all boards meeting coming up later this month?
Yeah, yes, I took a look at that. So it's an all board, oh, that one. That's different than the department head meeting. Yes, that's in Hopkins Academy Cafeteria. Definitely Bill and I, nobody else who wants, and we give a short presentation on, um.
So that's an annual plan?
Future needs, who we are, what we need, what we're doing, what we expect to do, what we're trying to accomplish.
I think that's the twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
It's a Wednesday.
It's Wednesday, seven.
So, it's been, sometimes it's been, some of the boards, some people get quite carried away and speak for a good amount of time, but there's.
Well, they limit the time, isn't it?
Well, except the one year they, they decided that an update of the master, the planning board was going to go over the update to the master plan, but they didn't tell us about it.
Yeah.
So we were the main course, and we didn't realize.
Yeah. So we get up there and talk one, talk one, and we, I mean, our presentation probably lasted that day. The presentation probably lasted a couple of minutes, a little more, when the questions were, went on for a bit.
So I don't need to be a thing. You'll, you'll, you'll re-.
Come back here.
In our first meeting in February, how that went.
Yeah, you're, you're welcome to come if you want, or you can catch it on.
I have a piano lesson at seven, so if I don't have to miss it, if you've got us covered.
Yeah.
I'll go hit the keys.
You practice every day?
Don't tell I expect her to.
If they don't live in Hadley, they have no way. Well, yes, this goes out on YouTube, so they, they, they can track you down.
My sisters took lessons from a woman named Ruth Scott. Remember Ruth Scott up here?
Yes.
So I've got nothing else. Well, there is a, coming up in, I think, March, I just sent out today, an Affordable Housing Trust Fund Training Program. It's a Saturday in March.
In Marlboro.
In Marlboro, so, uh, nothing requires immediate action.
This DLTA thing, is that anything?
I don't think we have any proposals per se, but I think it also went to David Nixon on behalf of the select board, and, uh, he may have come up with something. Let's see, we did, uh, I think we discussed this, or maybe just Jim and I discussed this. We did get an email from PVPC that our, uh, support contract had basically been exhausted as of December because of, there was so much MS four work that we did. And they had thrown all of that onto our budget. I talked to David Nixon, and he has a separate warrant article budget for MS four compliance. So we asked PVPC to resubmit their bill, breaking out MS four from everything else we've been doing. And MS four will be paid for out of, out of the net. So we're, we are, will not be out of planning services.
I got to get our warranty question. I'm not going to give us any more money for salaries or any of that stuff, but I was thinking of asking for more money for our contract service, because that's been the same for the rest of we started doing this. And while that amount has not gone up, the amount of time because of that has been going less and less. So I was thinking of basically jump, jumping in at fifteen thousand, see where it goes.
Give me that Pioneer Valley Planning Commission contract. I mean, certainly.
We get a lot from that.
We do, and it's, it's a good idea, but again, you got to think, Mike, just for grabbing Wakeley's Affordable Housing Trust.
Oh, yes.
I mean, that was, that probably would have cost the town probably three, four grand.
I talked to Fred Baron's wife. Fred is one of the trustees on the housing trust there. I mentioned, and she said, I said, have they done anything? And she said, no, they haven't, because they can't buy small enough properties giving the amount of money they have. So they're not really looking at leveraging it as we might be.
For the, uh, maybe not the next meeting, but for the third Tuesday in February. Right now, I don't have anything on, on the schedule for that one. We have the, right, on the first, we did go up to the first Tuesday in February.
The insurance trust and the.
Yeah, just talking about, yeah, I, I've given everybody a copy of it. Uh, we can, we come to that, come to the first Tuesday in February, ready to discuss that, so that maybe we can get on the town board.
We're, we're just about ready to adjourn.
You are?
Yeah.
Yes.
Are you on DB?
Yes.
But did, but did we adjourn?
They even everything they wanted.
Okay.
No, they just got, really what they wanted was two forty-foot sides, because they wanted one and two, two sides of the building. So we ended up giving them the one, and it's, the way it's measured is that little splash on the beginning of it has those, those like tentacles that stick out, and it makes it go a little bit over the forty. So, but if you measure the letters.
So you got one forty square foot side, that's maybe a bit bigger, externally illuminated.
No, there isn't any.
No, but you, no elimination?
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay. Okay, good. Thanks for your.
Thank you. Thank you.
You want a game tomorrow?
What?
Want a game tomorrow?
Uh, no, I've got a meeting tomorrow also.
He's got to re-rig his sock straw.
You got a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's ending. Thank you, and thank you, John.